Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
I don't want to sing your ear. Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Too many H's.
There is, there's a lot of H's.
There are a lot of H's. Okay, council, we will start with our consent agenda items. Are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda before we do? Michael, you wanted to add a committee report for service agency?
Yeah, and then the Public Safety Transportation Committee just met. We don't have any action items, but I could give a quick report.
Okay. All right, so we'll add those reports to our agenda. Move to our consent agenda, and we have approval of minutes from the January 14th council meeting. Then we had a couple of action items on our work session on the 19th. We'll report those minutes as well. Approval of a liquor license for Mike and Nikki's, the Americ Inn, and the Fairfield Arts Convention Center, and approval of claims in the amount of $183,841.92. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Please call the roll.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes, but I'll abstain on the approval of minutes from the January 19th work session as I was absent.
Okay. Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our hearing of those wishing to address the council. Is Dan Tudor here? He is not, and Chief, did you get a chance to see this?
Yes.
This complaint, is that something that you can, that you can address with Mr. Tudor? Or has, have you spoken with him?
I haven't spoken to him.
Okay.
I could...
No, I understand, you know, we all, we also understand what our enforcement of bicycle rules in the downtown is about, and when people first confront them, it can seem like it's some harassing behavior, but...
We only stopped him once. The city only stopped him on December 8th. He didn't identify himself, continued to be a problem, and wouldn't identify him. We had to call campus security in order to identify him. So he was booked into jail because he wouldn't give his ID and things like that. Once we got him ID'd, he got a citation and moved on. The second time that he was stopped was on January 11th at 9:40. He was stopped by a county, by the county at Highway 1 North and Packwood Road. We had had a complaint from a citizen that said that they couldn't see him because he was wearing dark clothing and couldn't see his bicycle light. When they stopped him, he had a rear light, but he had so much junk on his bicycle that you couldn't see the rear light. So they advised him that he needed to move his stuff so he could be more visible. His complaint is basically that we're not enforcing the distance of going around him. I think that he has just as much an obligation to be visible and follow the rules so people know that he's there, and I think that would give him plenty of distance at night to be visible. So I think it's a self-correcting problem if he would obey the rules. He told the officers the first time he was stopped that he has city council approval, and he can, he doesn't have to follow the rules because he's not a vehicle. And I'm like, you've had, a bicycle has to follow the rules of the road the same as a car operator.
Okay. Thanks for the background, so if anyone does receive any direct contact or complaint from Mr. Tudor, then they can relay those points to him from the chief. Okay, let me get out of this. There we go. Okay, so the next will be our resolutions and action items. First is a resolution providing financial support for Area 15 regional planning. This is something that we do on an annual basis for basic, for some basic fees for the use of services from regional planning out of Area 15. And as you can see, it's calculated on a per capita basis. I've got a second. I keep opening up the wrong... There we go. So the total amount would be $3,974.88, and at a contribution of 42 cents per capita. Are there any questions regarding the resolution?
I move for approval of the resolution.
Moved by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Boyer. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, council will be the second reading of our pedestrian walkways and bikeway trails crossing ordinance. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any public comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask, have we received any feedback on this, or any amendments?
I have a, an amendment that I would like to propose to it. At the last meeting, I had questioned whether ADA compliance would be met by the description that's in this ordinance. And in section F of the first portion of this, where we begin, "When Crossing a City Designated Shared Use Path", the last sentence currently reads, "The crossing shall be constructed in accordance with the City Subdivision and Street Improvements Code, must be inspected and approved by the city engineer and city public works director, and must be in conformance with all federal, state, local laws, rules, and regulations applicable to the, to public shared use path or trail crossings." And of that, after conformance with, I would like the language to read, "The Iowa Department of Transportation and Iowa State Urban Design and Specification, SUDAS, Design Manual, Chapter 12, Sidewalks and Bicycle Facilities AS", and then continue with "applicable to public shared use path or trail crossing." Now, that particular chapter in the design manual refers to the federal laws and regulations as it pertains to ADA crossings of both sidewalks, trails, streets, alleys, and such. And it also puts pro forma on the design of those crossings as well. And, and I think, Melanie, you can, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this as far as the language is concerned, but I think it carries all the specifications that our engineer would normally look for in the performance of the work to be done out there in order to create a new street that either has a trail crossing it, or a new trail crossing the street, or a new sidewalk crossing the street.
Yeah, and Darren, and I read your email right before I came. The one suggestion I thought was, when you say the Iowa DOT and Iowa SUDAS specification design manual, you could, if you wanted to clarify it, you could add in there accessible sidewalk requirements. That's a particular section in that Chapter 12.
Well, Chapter 12 covers, it has three parts to it, A, B, and C. A is applicable to sidewalks, B is to trails, C is to accommodation use. So that's why I put it as just Chapter 12, but if you think it needs to be more specific, yeah, I would go along with that.
I think so. The way that it reads, it kind of reads that sidewalks shall meet the ADA requirements, and trails should meet the requirements.
That's true.
If you change, if you change this to, to say that it has to include the accessible guidelines, it makes them both a shall, and I think kind of clarifies it a little bit.
Okay.
Other than that, I definitely agree with the changes.
So you would say then again, that's after design manual, chapter?
I'd leave out the chapter, just write, "Design manual, accessible sidewalk requirements", capital on each of those.
And, and you're saying, Darren, too, after doing that, you remove the language, "all federal, state, local", you wouldn't say, "as well as", you just remove the language?
No, you just replace it with that, because when you, when you refer to that, you're, you're getting all of that in there as well.
Yep.
Because the first section starts off with, is this, this chapter complies with federal laws and regulations, and it gives you links to those laws and regulations as far as, as fundings and requirements.
And as those regulations change, hopefully the DOT manual will stay up to date, and we don't have to change our ordinance.
Well, and people work very hard to do that.
Yep.
SUDAS has a really good committee of people that work together in order to bring that about, and the Transportation Center and Ames works really diligent at it, as well as the DOT.
So Darren, this would actually help be more specific?
I think it would help be more specific that we would get a handicap-approved ramp at the locations using the acceptable design standards for those.
Okay.
And as we move forward into the future, I think the city in general is going to have to look at how we word for street construction and sidewalks as they come to the streets, because we're going to be held more and more accountable for being able to have accessibility at those to a very specific standard.
But if I may, Melanie just said, "The guideline doesn't require it, it encourages it", is that what I heard?
If we, if we change it to saying that the accessible sidewalk requirements apply to both trails and sidewalks, then that your code makes it required for trails.
As it stands now, it's a shall for sidewalks and a should for trails.
Right.
Right?
Right. And it goes into having different types of trails, and if the trail is primarily for transportation rather than recreation, you know, different rules apply, and it gets into a lot of shoulds and shalls, and we hope you can, but I think this clarifies it so that our, our trail system becomes more of a transportation, not, and as defined by SUDAS, more of a transportation feature rather than just a recreation, and that therefore it's still all of the, you know, crosswalk widths, painting the crosswalks, designating the crosswalks would still apply to our trail system.
Correct. As the, if there's already a street or something that, I mean, I mean, if it's just a stone chipped trail, you're not going to have a crosswalk. Are you?
When a new street is constructed, or, and actually the way the code is written, even if it's a new driveway, the area that the chipped trail, where it crosses that road gets paved, as kind of a safety measure that the cars aren't tearing up the, the trail. Now, in a street case, if a, if a new street crosses the trail and it becomes a public street, my guess is the city would then make an ordinance to add it to the list of designated crosswalks throughout the city, if it became an actual city-designated street.
Say it's a Seal Code street going to cross a chipped side.
The way the ordinance is written now is it would be paved.
All right, so that's, if you'll get that language to Joy.
Yeah, I just have the two words to correct. It would be manual, accessible sidewalks, and then the removal of, and bicycle facilities.
I will.
Because I can mark this up and give it to Joy, because I sent her a copy of what I had attached with your email today as well.
Okay. And I replied back to Kevin, but I didn't reply to you, so I can get with you after the meeting and make sure we're on the same page.
We can do that. We'll, we'll make sure it's to Joy, so that it can be...
I wanted to make sure that she saw a copy before we got here, so we could speak to it, but I didn't roundhouse it when I was sending out the emails. But we can, we'll get the language right, though, tomorrow.
Sure.
Well, I have no other verbal or written comments.
Okay.
Okay, then I would move that we pass from the second to the third reading of this ordinance with the amended language in section or paragraph F of the ordinance.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the lease agreement with the MRC Corporation. Tracy, are you going to present that?
Sure. Good evening. I think you have before you, or have had a lease agreement that has been drafted as a result of, if you remember, last July, I think it was July 23rd, 23rd meeting, we presented to you the idea of leasing city-owned property out on 23rd Street for Midwest Recycling Center. And conceptually, you, you approved that, or at least gave us authority to kind of move ahead based upon a couple of things. And we drafted that, working with, with John, and today, here, we have Brian Wilke, who's the Business Development Manager for MRC, and I want to introduce him. And if you can, if you take a few moments, I'd like for him to come on and just kind of maybe give you a rundown on what they have planned here, what they do, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Thanks, Tracy. Come on up.
I'll keep it short and kind of let you know what we do, what we plan on doing here, and then open it up to any questions that you guys may have. First and foremost, we're extremely excited to be in Southern Iowa. We've done a lot of phone calling, we've met with people. Tracy took us around all of Southern Iowa, not just Fairfield, and it seems like it's a truly underserved area in terms of electronic recycling. So it's not only a great service to the community here in Fairfield, Southern Iowa, but also a great service to the environment. We have been in business, quick background, for almost 14 years now. Started in the appliance retail business, and then from that, worked into the appliance recycling, because, you know, end of life, you have to do something with them. So then we got a phone call from the Solid Waste District in St. Louis about, well, it's almost five years ago now, asking us if we'd be interested in electronic recycling. At that time, there wasn't a whole lot going on with electronic recycling. We did not really know what that meant, so we kind of turned it down. Didn't really want to dive into that. They came back to us with a grant and said, "If we fund the research, will you try to figure this out?" So we said yes. Long story short, from that first year, having two employees, we've created 30 jobs in the St. Louis area. We recycle anything with a quarter of battery, and we do that for free, with the exception of the old tube-style television, because there is a cost to recycling. So it's a completely free service to the community. They can drop off in Amber drop-off locations, we do community recycling events. We've already done one in Keokuk last fall, which was on a Tuesday, I believe, and it was very successful. We did two 24-foot truckloads within four hours out of Keokuk. So when I say anything with a quarter of battery, I truly mean anything with a quarter of battery. You can think of anything in your house, be it your microwave, your stove, cell phones, audio equipment, we recycle. So there's no need for that to go in the landfill here anymore. We are nationally certified, meaning that we have a written safety management system in place. We can prove from cradle to grave where each bit of material goes. Originally, our plans are to come up here and have a sales manager to go out and kind of, you know, figure out how to collect this stuff, bring it back to the location here in Fairfield, South 23rd. And from there, in the beginning, we will ship it down to Park Hill to be de-manufactured, because we don't have the infrastructure up here to do that. We do foresee, within a short period of time, hopefully, if we get enough material, being able to do the de-manufacturing here in Fairfield and creating some additional jobs for that. So, you know, at this point, I can just open it up to any questions or concerns you guys may have regarding our certification, or, you know, really anything.
Well, I read in your brochure one thing, that you have a certification of memory wipes for any computer equipment?
Yes.
So that's something that people can feel confident about if they have old computers, that you guys wipe the memory before recycling?
Yeah, that's part of our national certification. So we do an eight-wipe pass, which is third-party certified, which means we have to send it to a forensic lab once we wipe them, and they come back with us with a test, I believe it's bi-annually. And to let us know that our equipment's working properly. If there's bad sectors on a hard drive, we have a shredding operation that will just run it through the shredder. So, yeah, safe there. We work with a lot of large corporations that are, you know, really concerned about that, hospitals, banks, and believe it or not, even copy machines, larger copy machines. They have hard drives that can hold, you know, 20, depending on the hard drive, to 40,000 of the last copies that were made. And a lot of times, people don't realize that, so they're putting them out on the curb, like, "Oh, I hope my waste taller takes this", and then, you know, John Doe can come grab that, and he's got 40,000 copies from the law office or the bank or whatever. So, yeah, we, we realize that's a concern, and we've, you know, taken the necessary steps to...
What's your timeframe? You know, once we approve your lease, what, you know, how soon will you be in operation here?
Well, I've got, I think I've got one resume already, so we're looking at, you know, getting a manager up here trained, letting him know the ins and outs of our business so that, you know, he knows what we're looking for, how we want to proceed. What we'd really like to do is do like a kickoff, you know, have, let's say, grand opening April. Have a, or may, have a kickoff recycling. Or even at that location, if, you know, if we can commit it there. And that way to create the words, because if people know and realize that this service is there, and it's free, aside from the televisions, which we will work on some grants to combat that, as we've done in St. Louis, we found that they'll use it.
Better have several trucks.
Thank you.
I was talking to the kid that checked me in, telling him what we were doing. He said, "I've got like eight computers right now. Every time I put them out on the curb for the waste towers, they just put them back in the yard." Well, we don't do the, you know, curbside pickup, but I think, you know, we'll be close enough where people will, will be able to drive. Again, you know, we're really excited to be here, and it seems like everybody that we've talked to is, is welcoming, welcoming us with open arms and wants us to be here and wants us to add the service, so.
Tracy got that ringtone under control? Chief of Police is here, in case you need us. Okay. Tracy, would you mind going over the details of the lease for the council again? But, yeah, we're obviously very...
Do you have copies of it?
Yeah.
Is it very long, or?
I haven't seen any copy of it yet. There wasn't one attached.
There wasn't one attached at this meeting. I know we had it.
Oh, there wasn't?
No. We don't have it on our...
We could maybe quick-make some copies or something.
I've got, I've got, I've got a copy here on Paul's. I thought, I thought that was forwarded to you.
We viewed a copy of one packet.
You're unhappy?
It was not in the, it was not in our packet, it was not a copy. But I know, we have viewed it before, if we could just go over the high points.
Yeah.
It basically provides for two years, from February 15th, of a flat annual lease of $3,900 a year. And that is going to take care of some transitioning out of tech that is out there, has a question mark right now. After that, there is an agreement that, assuming they do the other conditions of the lease, which are to set up the recycling operation, employ some personnel, provide the service to the community, that they'll also meet two other main conditions of this lease. One is to enter into an economic development agreement with the city to continue to provide the service in return for being able to buy the building after two years at an advantageous price. Right now, we carry that building at about $93,000 assessed value. We are going to sell it under this lease purchase condition at the back end for $15,000. The building's going to have to be overhauled. They know it. There are some things they'll be installing as far as the services they provide that are specific to the recycle, is different than other kinds of recycling we've been familiar with in prior agreements to our service agency. So what we're anticipating is the economic development agreement will flesh that out. There will be a regular purchase agreement that comes back to you under 30624 of the code, which you have to follow as far as having a public hearing on selling a piece of public property. You'll also need to have a public hearing to consider the fact that you're selling it at an advantageous price. And the economic development agreement allows you to do that in the name and for the reasons that are set out in the lease, which basically acknowledge that it's going to provide a vital, valuable service to the community as far as the electronics recycling as a new type of service. It's going to create a new business at a new location with collateral contacts and economic multiplier considerations for the area. Second reason for the economic development agreement and benefit of it. Return the leased site to the status as an operating continuous business site, included in the community tax base, so we'll get it back on the tax base. And we're going to create employment opportunities, including three to five full-time jobs, hopefully other part-time and temporary positions as supported. And we hope that they grow and that that will expand into other opportunities depending on the community's needs. And those four things fit under our statutory economic development criteria that a town can do something advantageous for a private business. We can't just give away money, we can't just give away property in the name of economic development, with a properly drawn economic development agreement. We'll be just fine, so that's behind these, and is the condition at the back end.
Great. Thank you, John. And there will be, if you've been in the building, there will be considerable upgrades to it, to make it habitable and a good work environment, so that's, that's the value that we're getting out of this.
If any of you have been in the building, I mean, if there's a mold issue, it's going to have to be completely gutted, and, and really basically start all over, so it'll just be a shell.
Yeah.
And they, they know that, they've been through the building, obviously, and they understand that, so.
I would point out, too, Your Honor, when it comes to the amount of services of recycling we have, this is an integral component to that and almost the most difficult to get done, because so few companies do do it, and it's very difficult to do. It has to be an economy of scale type operation. We're just, we're tickled to death that we've been chosen.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. I, I agree with those points, too. I think it is the right kind of activity to encourage with our ability. Great.
So I have brochures, if anybody wants them, or any other questions, just ask me.
Great. Thank you. So, zero, a motion to approve the lease agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, the same sign?
Here. I oppose.
Oppose. Boyer. Motion passes four to one. Next, the next action item on the agenda, I'm going to just ask the table, it was a set of public hearing for the application for CDBG funds that we have been working on. This would be for the facade restoration. We've, you know, our deadline was January 31st, and the company that's been working on preparing a lot of the architectural drawings and recommendations for the façades is not going to be able to complete in time. So unfortunately, we're not going to be applying for this cycle of funds. We're going to keep going, but I think it would be more relevant to have a public hearing once we have designs in place and we've got more information on the project. It is a step that we absolutely, that we needed to have done by January 31st, where we're going to make this deadline, but unfortunately, we're not going to make it at this time, so I would postpone or table this at the time.
When's the next cycle?
It's a year, so it'll be a year from now unless that changes, but unfortunate, but, you know, we're just going to have to wait and be, be prepared. Next, on your agenda, council, is the nuisance condemnation regarding property at 406 North Sixth Street. Kevin, are you going to report on this, or is our city attorney? Scott, you're reporting.
You want to address this tonight, or you want to table it tonight?
Yeah, 406 is, we've got two months on that one.
That's the wrong address. Correct.
What is it? What's the address?
This is the wrong address for this.
We'll table that item tonight. We can take it over at our next meeting, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. Let's... So before I move on to, to my report, I just want to ask, is Dan Tudor here?
I am here.
Okay. Well, we are, we took up your issue, Mr. Tudor, at the meeting started at 7:00, but I just took a guess. Would you like to address the council at this time?
I would, if there's a...
Yeah, please come up to the microphone. Sure. We have a copy... We have a copy of the, of the form that you filled out to the council and the chief of police did explain from their side what had taken place. So we'll give you a couple of minutes to tell us your side.
Well, I don't see many young people here besides myself, but we're all young at heart. And I'd like to say that Fairfield has some goals, sustainability goals that I may have seen on the website that many students saw before we packed up our bags and came to MUM to, you know, for the sustainability program and all of that. So bicycling is one of the ways to achieve those goals and to discourage bicycling by worthless tickets that in other cities, even as homeless, wouldn't even waste time on a bicycle ticket of such nature because they have real crimes, well, worthy crimes to deal with. For, in my case, I'm coming from Ohio. I lived in Columbus and Kent State. It's a really big college town. Bicycling in the wrong direction, I've never even heard of this. I mean, of course, I have a driver's license, so I passed through that section and not really cared because I had a car. But I've been on my bicycle and vehicles of that size, sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand pounds, that's an actual real threat. And they've come very close to me, hit me, and police cars do just pass by like, oh, that's nothing. But me going the wrong direction for fifty feet at ten thirty at night after a little MUM dance because I was trying to get back to my dorm, that is just complete harassment and that doesn't paint a beautiful picture of Fairfield. It doesn't inspire anyone to continue bicycling. Bicycling is just difficult and dangerous. And I guess there's been other students who have been here, who have been harassed for bicycling on the sidewalk. Bicycles go on the sidewalk. It does, I don't even care what that law says. Bicycles are going to continue to go on the sidewalk. They just are.
The sidewalk issue is just in our downtown. It's not, it's not in any other part of the city.
I mean, all they need to do is park a police vehicle on campus and see all the bicycles that go on the sidewalk. They should give everybody a ticket and see how angry we get. Because I guarantee you, man, I can pay that ticket. And you're going to speak, I just wanted to say one more thing. Regarding bicycles, the ticket, even if I were to accept that maybe I was, you know, breaking the law, I could have accepted a warning and, you know, I having bicycles in the wrong direction, at least I don't think. Because all the wrong directions are not clearly marked, especially if this town is a little bit country. There's not a light everywhere. I'd have to know exactly every single road. And sometimes it's just safer to just not bicycle on the road with all these high speeds. I remember reading that article about you guys having that issue with Beddick City lowering the speed limit. That car going fifty miles per hour, when they hit you, you're going to be dead. And that's just going to be it. So I'd rather be on the sidewalk going a little bit, you know, fast or just be out the way. And that's where I kind of, wait, one more thing. The bicycle ticket, it's not fair. It's one hundred and ninety dollars that I don't have the money to pay. I've been driving my car going the wrong direction and got like a warning several times, not even just in this city, but other cities. And it's me a ticket. And not only that, but I also went to jail for this. And that was wrong as well because I was unable to maybe speak to this officer. I don't have to speak to anyone. That's my right to free speech to not say anything. And then my bicycle wasn't even, you know, put in the safe place. Somebody could have stole it and then I would have been walking all over the place. And there's not a sidewalk everywhere. But I've held this for long enough, but that's my thing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tudor. Counsel, any response? First of all, we want to be clear. Sidewalks are allowed. Bicycles are allowed on the sidewalks except in our downtown. The reason they're not allowed in the downtown is you have a higher concentration of pedestrians. You have people walking out of stores and that's blind to a cyclist who may be on that sidewalk and they can be hit walking out of a store. So we outlaw them only in the downtown. That you're, is that clear?
Yeah.
That sidewalks are, okay. As far as, as far as the laws, basically, we all understand that, you know, anyone that shares the road has to abide by the laws. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight after your presentation about a program that the city's going to be involved in regarding creating more wellness within the community. And one of the elements that the, that cities are going to be asked to do is to make what are called complete streets, pedestrian, bicycle, and automobile friendly streets. But if everyone is going to agree to that, everyone also has to agree to abide by the laws, the laws of traffic flow. And that's what we ask our police to uphold and enforce. So when you come into a situation where you're going against that, A, you should expect to be stopped. And now what happens after that, we all love the warning scenario, myself included. And that's debatable about whether you should or should have gotten a warning at that time. That is up to the discretion of the officer at the time. But cooperation is always probably the best way to get a warning than, than being uncooperative just as a piece of personal advice. But again, we don't, there's no intention to harass. There's no intention to not be supportive of your use of a bicycle. Within the city, we do encourage that. We want to encourage more people to use that form of transportation who desire to. But if we do, we do have to follow the laws of traffic if we choose to do that. Now, on a sidewalk, I think you can be going any way you want. You could be going against, you know, against the traffic flow, but it is, it's quite dangerous if you're doing that on the roadway, which is why the law exists.
And sir, anytime we do stop you, we have to get your name and date of birth and run you. That's our policy. So you giving us a false name or having to contact campus security lets us, ties us up when we could be doing it, according to you, better things?
I'd like to say this. The bicycle, actually, the law or whatever says pedestrians, when there's no sidewalk, are supposed to walk on the street against traffic, right? I'm pretty sure that that in Ohio at least.
It doesn't say that in Iowa.
Okay, maybe it doesn't say that in Iowa, but.
You're saying against?
Traffic.
Against traffic.
Pedestrians on foot.
On foot. So what's it in Iowa? Is it against traffic?
It's a safety recommendation that you do that so that you're recognizable with traffic, but that would not be in a biped situation.
So here in Iowa, you're supposed to do that if you're just walking?
If you're on foot. But if you're in, you know, biped or a bicycle type situation, you would, you would not do that. You would go with traffic.
So in that instance, pedestrians can go against traffic?
On foot, yes.
On foot.
It's deemed to be a safer method of travel on the streetway if you're on foot. But if you're on a bicycle, the logic being that you're able to travel at higher speeds, basically you are like a vehicle. You're able to travel at the same speeds as vehicles, especially in urban type situations.
So basically what I'm saying is pedestrians in this instance can go against traffic for safety reasons. And there's lots of areas where there's no sidewalks where they need to do this.
There are some areas, yes, you're correct.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Tudor. We appreciate you coming to the council meeting to report. Next council, I wanted to give an update on our Blue Zone activity. Since last October, when we were announced as a designation site for, for Blue Zone, we were accepted with nine other small communities throughout Iowa. And each community was assigned a community liaison who has been working with our leadership group within the city. And it's organized by a very specific structure that was outlined within the Blue Zones. Our kind of executive committee is called a Power Nine. And then there are separate individual committees that oversee different areas and there are co-chairs, leaders in those areas. So there are probably about twenty to twenty-five people within the city right now who have been working with our community liaison to begin to put together, first of all, something that's very familiar to all of us here is a planning document, something to guide how it is that we're going to roll out the initiatives and the goals that we set for the community. And this is referred to as a blueprint. So Fairfield has been moving along quite nicely in our preparation of this. It will be written sometime in March and April. The next, the step that we took this past week was there were about a dozen people from within that group, leadership group, that attended what's called a Blue Zone Institute in Des Moines. This was held at the Wellmark facilities. And it was a two-day session. Kevin was able to attend one day. I was able to attend for two days. We had members of the community school district there. We had members from manufacturers association, businesses, restaurants, grocery stores from within the community. And essentially, what we all learned and trained on was a lot of the different areas that will be sort of expectations from within the community to become a certified Blue Zone. So the city would become a certified Blue Zone. Each of the different areas would become demonstration sites for Blue Zones. So grocery stores would receive a recognition, restaurants, schools, workplaces, and different things like that. So we were going, oh, what I wanted to just give you kind of a glimpse of, we, we went over the community policies for, that the city would actually be looking at to, to become certified in this area. And there are things that we'll be dealing with more after we've gotten our blueprint done and we're, we're through that phase and we have a planning document, but this would be our piece of it. And there are many areas that we are already addressing, many things that we are already doing. But we are, one of the, one of the areas is oddly enough, this area of making sure that our streets and walkways are, are getting the maximum usage from all areas. There's actually a national program called Complete Streets that, I don't know whether you're familiar with this or not, Darren, if the DOT has ever looked at that. But essentially, it's a way of ensuring that we're sharing the streets with pedestrians, bicycles, and automobiles. So adopting a resolution or an ordinance for complete streets, and we'll get into all the particulars of that sometime in the future. And I think there are from, there are probably ten different elements within that. Many of those we have in place already, but I don't know that we would completely comply, but it's one of the things that we're going to look at. Another area is a tobacco policy. And I think with everything that we've adopted and with the state of Iowa has mandated through law, we're probably going to qualify in that area, but we'll go over that as well. And then the rest would be just encouraging healthy eating and healthy living. So one of the points was to adopt a bicycle master plan and a pedestrian master plan, which we did as a city six or seven years ago. And we were the only city of the nine that were up there that had that. We'll be looking at zoning and building codes. We'll be looking at our recreational facilities, a number of different, a number of different things. And then another area will be healthy eating and active living policy. One of the areas might be looking at water fountains that are available to the public and seeing that we have enough of those or more of those. Restrictions on unhealthy vending. And again, this is when they say community policy, some of this will refer also to schools. So unhealthy vending in or near schools and playgrounds, those types of things. So I think a list of items that, that will be easily achievable for us, but once we get through this planning process, we'll bring a document to the city council for approval. We had an interesting time. I was looking, Tracy Vance was also with us as well. And, you know, the sedentary nature of our lifestyles, sitting behind desks, sitting at long meetings for a long time without any movement is, is something that we address as well. So we did a lot of standing and walking. We did walking meetings. We had meetings where people stood and talked at each other instead of sitting down at the table. We had, we had some short breaks where we were doing some stretching exercises, things like that. So I think that I may surprise you from time to time if I think we've been sitting a little too long. We may take a little break, get up and stretch. But we won't do that tonight because we do have a short agenda going. But it was really a pleasure to be with all of the other cities and it was a great bond between everyone that was, that focused on this. We also got an opportunity to hear from the gentleman who coined the Blue Zone phrase and wrote the book. Blue Zone, his name is Dan Butner, is from Minneapolis area. And his accounts of the cultures that he studied and some of the things that happened because of the basic simplicity of lifestyle and the integration of families and community and culture, diet and rest and activity and good food and being, living closer to the outdoors and nature, was really remarkable what kind of results that they had gotten. And he told one story that I think no one will ever forget about a man that he recently wrote about in the New York Times in October. And one of the Blue Zone areas is an island off the coast of Greece. And it's a very, it's actually a very small island, a small community of about eleven thousand people. But again, extraordinary longevity within, within the island, within the community. People regularly living over a hundred years old and a very happy, healthy community. So there was a man who was born there, had moved to the United States, spent most of his life here and worked here. And at sixty years old, he was diagnosed with lung cancer. And he had the diagnosis confirmed by two other doctors and they all, he didn't say what stage of cancer, but he was given a short period of time to live, six months to live. So he decided that if that were the case, he would just go home and spend time with his family. His parents were still alive. So he went back to the island and didn't do anything medically, but just started to reintegrate his life into that style and that culture. And today, that man is a hundred and two years old. And he's the subject of, one of the subjects in the latest book that Dan Butner is writing. So Butner told a funny story finishing it off and saying that in writing this book, he had called him literally just a week ago and said, now, was there anything that you did afterwards to have this checked out, to verify it with, with doctors? And he said, oh, he said, yeah, I went back to the United States. He said, I looked up all of my doctors and they were all dead. Anyway, we're looking forward to moving into the next phase. What will happen is that in February, there will be focus groups within the community. There'll be four different focus groups for different areas that will be publicized very soon. I would encourage council members to attend those that are mentioned. We will have a community policy focus group probably at the end of February. Hopefully, we can all attend that or maybe we would potentially be able to do that tied in with a council meeting. But we look forward to everybody's participation and contributions to that. That's my report. Oh, no, it's not. Everybody heard that we're, that RagBri is coming. So we have, you know, a great organizational task as a community to prepare for this. It's obviously a great opportunity for us to showcase our community. It's a great, it's an activity that a lot of Fairfielders participate in and I know everybody's very, very excited about this. Nineteen ninety-seven was the last time that RagBri was through here, so it'll be sixteen years when they come. So great expectations from our community. I'm sure there are going to be, there's going to be an organizational structure and task force set up to help organize this from within the community. I encourage council members to be involved with that as well because, again, it's a, it's a lot to prepare for. I know it puts a lot on our city as well and, but it's, it's also just a great opportunity for us. We were thrilled to be, to be recognized and accepted as one of their stops. Let's see. Next, we have two committee reports. Michael, whichever one you'd like to do first?
Do the short one first. Connie and I are the new council representatives to the service agency. We had our first meeting last week. It's very brief. The new chair is Tammy Jones. So it's supervisors Dick Reed and Lee Demmett. Connie and myself and Tammy, that's the agency. We had one, one agenda item. Basically, we were talking about paint for the offices there in the Law Center. And I could say that Chief Harvey's room looks really nice with those blues. And so then the other officers see it and then they want to paint their rooms and they have a budget for that. But it was a good meeting. So the only other thing the service agency does besides overseeing the Law Center is the recycling center contract. the recycling center contract, which I think is up in 2017. So we'll be dealing with that, maybe you and me, maybe somebody else. Anything else you want to add to that one? It was short and sweet. Our other committee meeting was Connie and I, again, it was the Public Safety Transportation Committee. We met at six today here in council. We had three agenda items. The first was an issue with parking at Southview Circle. It's getting very crowded down there, too crowded where vehicles on either side of the street creates kind of a bottleneck where apparently even the waste management truck had trouble getting through at some point. And Fire Chief Fawn is concerned about getting a fire truck through there if necessary. So we're dealing with that. We're considering parking on one side of the street only, but we want to get more input from the neighbors before we take action. We also talked about extending sidewalks at the railroad crossings. Once the quiet zone was put in place, we've been channeling in a lot of locations, channeling pedestrians into the street, but it's a little tight right now with the median creating a channel. So we want to be able to have at least on one side of the street at every crossing a sidewalk for pedestrians. The railroad company had verbally agreed in 2010 that they would pay for the, they would put the spacers in between the tracks if the city brought the sidewalk to the tracks. But in order to work there, we need their permission because that's their right of way. So Kevin is going to help. I'm going to help Kevin draft a letter formally requesting that they put that in writing because it was just a verbal, and that was two directors ago. So it's a little outdated, but we want to, we want to get moving on that yet this year so that pedestrians have a safe way to get across at every crossing. And we also discussed the uncontrolled intersections. We have a list put together by Daryl Bisgard, and I think Chief Harvey also took a look at that, that our next meeting, when we bring it to the council, recommend it's, what was it, seventeen, thirteen yield signs and two stop signs? So it's just a way to add safety to these intersections that a lot of them currently have nothing. You have traffic that could potentially both think that they have the right of way until there's an accident. That's our report. No action.
All right. Thank you, Michael. There isn't any other business for the council, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned.